I will go ahead and start, but please know that this is very much a tight team effort. And we thought it would be important for us to provide you with a great understanding in relation to our year-end monies, which equates to approximately $1.7 million for FY '20. This, of course, is a substantial amount of money, much larger than what our typical year-end money reflects. And so we wanted you to have a multi-layered understanding of the various facets that go into that $1.7 million. So I'll go ahead and call out each of the items that we feel have contributed to that remaining dollar amount. And I do invite Marcia Stevens, our Chief Operations Officer, to chime in or to provide greater clarity on anything that I share tonight. And so the first item that we thought was really important to remind the Board of Supervisors of, began occurring in May. Specifically on May 20th, we were notified by the Virginia Department of Education that we were being impacted by the supplemental lottery funding being held back. We were again notified on May 28th that this would continue to be the case. However, the original holdback amount was supposed to occur on a specific date, and something in their Office of Finance occurred and it was delayed, and the money was still within our account. And so they sent out a statewide notification indicating that on June 16th, all funds that were initially to be withheld would now be received. So we went from losing $262,962.69 that we already had in our budget to losing that, and then a month later being notified that, guess what? We are able to allocate and appropriate that back to you. So at that time, that was a portion of money that we had thought we would not have access to. Two thousand, two hundred, $262,962.69. Two sixty-two, nine sixty-two, point six-nine. The second item that played into the remaining year-end monies is the Special Educational Regional Program Funds. This amount of money, or this pool of money, was reflective of the first full year of the regional programming. And so therefore, we did not budget associated with the dollar amounts, since this was its first full cycle. And this amount received actually exceeded what we anticipated. And so we received for Special Educational Regional Programs, $279,602.88. So this again was our first full annual experience, and the amount received by the county exceeded what we anticipated. The third item that played into the year-end monies is sales tax projections, which you are certainly no stranger to. In the midst of a health pandemic, we were anticipating a drastic cut associated with sales tax. You know that Caroline County Public Schools accrues two months of sales tax past the fiscal year-end, and we were projecting a 10% decline for four months of revenue due to COVID-19. In actuality, we did not net a decline. We actually received $136,933.14 above budget for sales tax.
You said that number again, please.
Yes, sir. So again, that was above and beyond what we were expecting, and certainly not reflective of a decline or diminishing sales tax. The fourth item that we attribute to having $1.7 million, it does not have an actual dollar amount associated with it, just due to the fact that there are a variety of pots that this small amount of money was coming from, and that is that we froze spending. When COVID began, we instantly communicated with our departments that we were only doing items that were deemed essential, and that there should be no additional spending beyond those critical items. And so we recognize and realize some savings associated with that for those non-essential purchases that were not conducted. We also looked at our health insurance. So we looked at our actual versus our projected numbers. Our projected in the budget for health insurance was $6,347,950.52. I'll read that one more time. Six million, three hundred, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. That was what was projected in our budget, okay? But our actual came in at $5,573,884.34. And we attribute that difference, which is obviously one of the factors associated with having such a large amount of year-end money, to the implementation of plan changes, and also some of our CCPS employee base made changes from Caroline County Public School coverage to go to other employee plans, okay? So other employer plans. So those are the two reasons why we feel that that number, actualized number, is different from the projected. The other aspect that we know has positively impacted year-end monies is Medicaid. We received more revenue for Medicaid than we anticipated or expected to the amount of And then the final number that we really think attributes to the approximate $1.7 million is related to the COVID shutdown savings. You know, you've referenced it as many times in your various board meetings about the different savings that have occurred, because we're not fully operational in the operations side of the House. And so some of those savings are attributed to substitutes, gasoline, bus drivers over contract, recruiting fair savings. And when we added that up, it was approximately $496,000 worth of savings. And so that gives you a much more detailed picture as to how the year-end monies were so substantive during a national health pandemic, or international, I should say. So are there any questions in relation to those items?
I think I just have the spending freeze, the savings on that. Can you give me a number? No number, just contributory.
Sure. I'm going to let Ms. Stevens reference that, because she was working on that number. And while we didn't have a hard and fast number, she might be able to give you some more qualitative.
Also, if I could get the health insurance spending, savings as well, the actual number?
Yes. The actual number was $5,573,884.34.
And your budget number was six?
Six million, three hundred, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. So we realized that savings for the change plan, change in plans, as well as some employees electing different types of coverage.
So the difference is $774,066.18. And for the freezing of the spending, there are a lot, our general ledger is a huge general ledger, and there are a lot of little pockets of funding that's coming in there from the freezing in the last quarter. So I did not add those all up. We did put in a hard, fast freeze, because we were anticipating this loss of the supplemental lottery and anticipating the loss of the sales tax. Accruing, accruing two months of sales tax past the year-end is approximately $800,000. And when you're looking at not receiving it and not knowing what they're, what's coming in and what's not, and you don't receive it until the end of August, we put those measures in to freeze spending at the time of the pandemic.
Any other questions with item number one? I hope that provides you with some additional clarity. Marcia has done a fabulous job staying abreast of all of the ever-evolving dynamics with both state monies, federal monies, and of course, local dollars.
Just trying to make sure, I was, I was trying to make a spreadsheet just to make sure I could understand it.
Sure.
If I could repeat, the lottery money, you planned on not getting, but you got what you were originally supposed to get, so that's basically a wall, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It was additional revenue we received, but we were cutting back as we expected not to receive it.
Right, right. But the net, net, that is zero.
To our budget to actual, yes.
So special ed, and I use round numbers, you got $279,000 more. Sales tax, you got $137,000 above the budget, so that's basically more.
Correct.
Seven seventy-four savings for health insurance?
Correct.
One oh-three for Medicaid. I didn't know you got any for Medicaid.
We do. We track Medicaid for various services our students receive, and we receive reimbursement funds.
And the last one is, you said $496,000 in COVID shutdown savings?
Correct.
And Excel said that's $1.78 million, which is close enough. Okay. Thanks.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Sealy, would you like for us to just carry on?
Sure.
Okay. The second item, I'm going to pass over to Ms. Stevens to cover in relation to year-end monies from FY '18, '19, and '20.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick. I just wanted to go over the amount of year-end monies that we have had the past several years. We have requested reappropriation of the funding, and at this point, we had received in November, the funding for $89,382 to replace Bus 63. The insurance didn't cover the full amount of that replacement, so we did get that reappropriation from you all, which was part of the FY '19 funds. The FY '18 funds was a $35,126, as stated in the CAFR. For FY '19, it was $522,602. And we had that $89,000 for the bus, so we had remaining of $433,220 remaining, as stated in the CAFR. There's also $300,000 that was FY '19 Anthem appropriation in our other revenue, which was not recognized due to the anticipated, our health account, our budgeted was $294,000 less than we actually expended. Therefore, we did not recognize those revenues. And FY '20, we're looking at $1.7 million prior to any final adjustments with the auditors. They come back on October 19th. FY '20 Anthem monies, $218,719. As we discussed previously with Dr. Calverick, the savings on health insurance was $774,000. Therefore, we did not recognize that $218 also on the books. So our total year-end request at this point is $2,854,694. That includes FY '18, FY '19, less the bus, FY '20, and the two years of Anthem funding and any appropriated, there were some Anthem funding that had appropriated balances remaining. So that number again is 2.854694. As we discussed in the FY '21 budget process, the Governor and General Assembly passed the new lottery infrastructure regulation on July 1, 2020. It stated 30% of our budget, or of our supplemental lottery funding, had to come and be filled with one-time items. They replaced the supplemental lottery per pupil funding. They took that account out, they replaced it and called it infrastructure and operations per pupil amount now, and that's 30% this year for '21. It'll go to 40% for FY '22. Our CCPS budget does currently reflect those one-time expenses in there, because we had to fill it in for FY '21 in order to meet that requirement of the General Assembly. In order to get that into our budget, we did have to eliminate the implementation of Phase 3 salary study, because we did not have enough funds in order to cover that $300,000 and the additional amount to create the, the $300,000 that we were asking for, the Anthem funds from FY '19 to complete that Phase 3 implementation. In the past, we have requested prior year carryover funding for one-time expenditures. As you all may recall, we presented to you in January, I believe, of our CIP budget that we were proposing for FY '21. It resulted in $3.3 million. That included vehicles for our maintenance and our student transport, included technology, mental health awareness, wellness, a wrestling facility, stadium light replacement, softball field adjustments with the access to the field, health and PE and athletic fields and turf. We also asked for some facility improvements, the annex windows at the annex building, auditorium and gym lighting, sound and seating. We also had some safety measures. Our stadium is out of compliance at Caroline High School and comes up on a safety audit each year. Along with our stadium bleachers, at CMS, there's no handrails when you go up the, up the bleachers in order to assist you in climbing those bleachers. The CTE wing needs air conditioning, and we needed a safety fence around CTE, because it's a very vulnerable spot when you're coming up 207 with the kids out there at the CTE end of the school. And then we had the fire alarms, which are at the final completion stage. They were able to be, you all appropriated them in June. They were able to sign the contract and get that started, and payments had been made.
Did that come through last year or did?
It is a split. The work that was completed prior to June 30th had been submitted in FY '20. The work completed after June 30th has been submitted in FY '21.
Because we talked about that being part of the 30% budget, right?
It will roll over. The capital improvement plans are paid by the county on their budget. It's not recorded on our annual school report.
Right, but I just remember.
I thought we, I thought we worked that out when it came out of our 30%.
In order for it to come out, and please correct me, I'm incorrect. In order for it to come out of our 30%, the money would need to actually be in our account, and we would have to be responsible for paying the bills. That was not something that Mr. Cully indicated would be.
Bar laws in Seattle. I mean, the capital budget.
Yeah, because anything that was already listed couldn't go in there. So it had to come out of ours, because it could be a project that was.
So we thought we were going to have to put that back down.
Right, that didn't happen because of the rules of, it had to be, it had to be something not already listed as capital private.
And if I'm understanding correctly, that is also being paid from the detention center funding?
Correct.
Right.
We also had in that CIP proposal, request capital outlay for replacement furniture and desk, the track repainting and top coating, which is approximately $60,000. Exterior lighting to our buildings and uninterrupted power supplies for our technology and servers. That's a little bit beyond mine. I know it keeps them from setting down. Little beyond my knowledge. And a voice-over IP server. The voice-over IP server and another data server were funded in the CIP, as well as $100,000 for the vehicles and $50,000 for a multipurpose truck. There was also $25,000 for classroom technology and staff computers. So we were not funded any of our mental health and wellness items and our facility and our safety items for the upcoming year. So are there any questions about the past year-end carryover balances and the new infrastructure funding and our CIP requests that we had made for FY '21?
And I do think it's important, before we field any questions for us, to reiterate our ongoing interest in gaining access to the FY '18, '19, and '20 financials, because as demonstrated by reviewing our CIP requests, we have $2.8 million, in which demonstrates tremendous fiscal stewardship, but also aligns very closely with the capital improvement requests that are very much needed. And so we would like to hear from you on what your thoughts are associated with this item being obtained at the next meeting that you have as an agenda item.
I'd first like to see a list. I don't know about the other board members, but I grew weary writing down numbers. I wish we may have the list tonight to actually look at, because it's a lot of numbers and it goes way back. I think there are some, I think there are discussions, some discussions on some of the dollar amounts that are right here, based on where, what you're calling them and how they were actually funded from the county budget, in particular, the Anthem funds, because they weren't given to you as Anthem funds, they were given to you as general funds. So I know that those are the issues that we've talked about in the past, and probably we further need further discussion. The other thing is, we still don't have a state, the new state budget, it's been amended by the Governor and the General Assembly, which is not out yet, which is part of the whole agreement we as a board had before we moved forward on anything we want to see with the amended budget items. We understand that there is a $2.3 billion shortfall, now a $20 billion, what they're calling a discretionary fund, which I don't have a good definition of who it covers or what it covers. And I think most of the board members, there's actually a memo on our website that says, once we got the amended budget from the Governor and the General Assembly, we would actually talk about the rest of these funds that were left over. And I'll stop there and go, any other board, Nancy?
I just, I just have one comment. I'm not saying there hasn't been good stewardship.
Nancy, you're going to have to speak way up.
I'm not saying that there hasn't been good, yeah, good stewardship. However, looking at the figures, I've managed to jot down, Mr. Sealy is right, we have been able to look at these figures ahead of time, and I apologize for quite so rushed, trying to write everything down. But, you know, $500,000 is based on COVID, unfortunately, in savings, and the lottery thing is washed, so luckily the state gave it to you. What we don't know until we get the budget is what's going to be next year. I would think the special ed regional fund, is that going to be a yearly thing? Did she say that was the first time that, that regional fund had been distributed?
That should be an annual amount. Now, these are savings that are realized, so regardless of what the financials are next year, this is still money that's accessible to us if it's reappropriated, because it's above and beyond. And so we're asking for it for one-time expenses.
And of course, the sales tax was based, by one, it's all a paper payment now. So I think we, we need to look at it and, and then decide. And also, I also had the same question on the Anthem, because when I think Anthem, we've already paid that out when the insurance change was done, but as Mr. Sealy reminded me, that was part of the general budgeting fund. So it's just going to take a little while for us to digest this. But could you explain the breakdown of the 30% for students, the 30% for one-time capital, that the lottery changes, do you need a little more detail on that?
Sure. Every year, the General Assembly provided a supplemental lottery per pupil funding. That has been done away with as of July 1st, 2020. It was replaced with a new allotment of funds called infrastructure and operations per pupil. And that, out of the money that is received under this new General Assembly regulation, 30% of that funding must be used for one-time infrastructure expenses. In a way, it was their method of addressing deteriorating facilities and forcing localities and school divisions can, and using that money to address deteriorating buildings. And so while that is a positive aspect, what it does is it has now taken 30% of monies that could be used for recurring costs, and it has forced school divisions to identify those for one-time expenses without plugging the absence of those recurring monies. And so that is what we were experiencing, and why we came to you earlier, earlier in the year, to request some of those additional monies, so that we weren't robbing Peter to pay Paul.
But we give you some capital improvement money every year.
It can't be used, though this is long, because you pay for capital improvement, improvements. You hold that money in your own line items, or I don't know exactly what the right technical term is at the locality level.
But you, what you will be able to tell us, what you take that 30% for capital improvements, what you use it for at the end of each year? That'd be a new section of your report?
I mean, we certainly can. We're not obligated, to be frank with you, to do that, because that's our funding that we get from the state. So we wouldn't have to give you an item as less, but in the spirit of transparency, we would have no issue doing that to demonstrate our due diligence and compliance, because it is a regulatory requirement. Yes, ma'am? Mr. Cully, did I accurately describe that in terms of the capital improvement monies, like your housing?
Yeah, the way to think of it is, well, number one, when the lottery passed, for those of us who've been doing this too long, it was specifically passed to be used for school construction. And when we initially got all that money, we used, before the lottery passed, we got state general fund money for school construction. There was a pot of money there. And then the lottery got passed, and we got some more for school construction. And that stayed that way for a long time. And then the first thing went away was the regular general fund money for school construction. And then the lottery money switched from being construction to being used any way you wanted to, and it got put into operations and not into construction. So the General Assembly, I think, decided, wait a minute, this was sold to the public to go to school construction, we better flip it back, which I imagine they're going to flip quite much of it back. So she, in her budget, in her operations budget, is missing 30% of the state money that they had last year, is the easiest way to look at it. It can be replaced with capital money we are already doing, because she's down 30% of that number, which is $300,000. That they have got to spend out of their operations budget on one-time capital expenditures, not on salaries or whatever else that it was just generally used for in the past. And in that instance, when we're sitting here in the spring, it's going to be 40%, which is obviously a larger nothing.
But at least you got it. That's better than not getting it, which you thought you, we told you.
No, what she thought she would get, no, what she thought she would get was in the 20 budget, which was not anything to do with construction. That was all to be used in general.
Right.
This is a crossover of July 1.
Mr. Underwood? In your CIP list of things that you were reading off, Marcia, I didn't hear much money about technology, and that kind of concerns me in that you're doing virtual right now, and it looks like it's going to be a while before this. I didn't, I didn't hear a lot about spending for improving technology for students, and that concerns me.
Yes.
You've got 1.7 that you're really asking for, then I'd like you to address your thought process on why more isn't going towards helping to build our technology infrastructure in some manner, and that just concerns me.
Good question. I think part of that is timing. What we were reviewing was what was submitted and created in the fall of 2019 and presented to you in January of 2020 prior to the pandemic occurring. Of course, when the pandemic occurred, it showed the light on gross inequities across the nation in relation to technology and broadband access, et cetera. And so we were just sharing with you what we had previously discussed. By no means would we say that this is what we would want to marry if we gained access. Additionally, Mr. Underwood, I do think it's important to share with you that you all have given us funds annually to continue purchasing computers. Now, while it hasn't been able to get us on the cycle of replacement that is recommended, we still very much appreciate those monies you've been giving to the CIP. In relation to COVID and how we now have had to create tremendous updates in technology, we have been able to, of course, garner almost a million dollars from the county cares money. We have our school-based cares funds. We also just this morning, this is hot off the press, I haven't even told our board yet, but we had applied for Gears Esser monies. And it was a grant, competitive grant application. There were nine categories. We qualified for eight. And it was a grant, competitive grant application. There were nine categories. We qualified for eight. And we, we said, go big or go home, and we created beautiful submissions with lots of data and detail, and we did receive approximately $200,000. Some of that is technology-based, some of it's social emotional learning, some of it's summer school programming. So we have some different pots of money that will help us continue to strengthen in the deficits that we've identified through the COVID season.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that, that we need to be thinking outside the box as it looks like if, if COVID gets any worse and our students are going to be at home, we have to find a way, I don't know what percent of students don't have access to internet in the county, but I know it's quite a, quite a large, particularly in my area, in the outlying areas, and we have to do something to ensure that there's equity in digital learning. So I think that would be a priority, and I would ask our board to say the same thing, that our priority is to ensure that we have digital access across the county, or all of the citizens who are working from home, as well as our students who are learning from home. So I think we need to, to come back and take a look at where that money is, is going to. So that was my concern, but I appreciate your.
Yeah, and I appreciate that as well, because I think that is possibly, and I don't want to speak on Mr. Thomas's behalf, but I think that may be part of why you would like that item to be added to the agenda, because we do want to work in tandem with you on broadband access.
I call Mr. Thomas last, thank you.
Essential. Thanks, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Ford, would you have?
His call had nothing to do with my concern.
Would you have?
I was, I'm excited that we have the money there. And I'm anxious to wait for the, the budget to come out, and I'm anxious to wait for the opportunity to vote to endeavor launch Martin Mathieu.
So what I think I'm hearing is that as soon as this special session draws to a close, which I know we're waiting with bated breath for that to occur, we thought it already happened. But as soon as that happens, you are open to us coming back to the table and having further discussion about this. Is that, is that correct?
Well, that's the concept before we.
After we get an offer of order.
Well, yeah, and that, I think the order is being done long before, long before the general assembly starts. And that's, that, and the problem is, the 10% cut that we're going to take, it starts July 1. If they don't tell us until January 1st, it's a 20% cut. And the problem, and that, the problem gets exponential every month they wait after that. And I think there's some foot dragging, hoping that they're going to find for the numbers, I mean, the number's a number at this point. They know what they were short, and I don't know why they're direct, because they're going to kill a county. You spread 2.3 billion across even a state of Virginia, it's a big number to everybody. Well, it's not a big number, Fairfax is a huge number to us, because their number will be our whole budget.
So, you know, I feel like we've put our financial cards on the table. Is there an estimated year-end number that you've calculated, Mr. Colley, at this point?
I would not close June 30. I'm hoping maybe this week.
Okay. And is that something that you could share with us, just to have a better understanding, as well as where, where are you with sales tax?
I've got that in the treasure group, so if I have all those numbers from the treasure, I'll have a better, better comfort. But it's, audit will be here right after that.
Okay. So we can revisit that?
It'll be soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Colley touched on it, but I wanted to make sure we all understood. We've been talking about this 30% has to be used for construction projects. 30% of what? And you said it was a million dollars, it's like the lottery, uh, what the lottery money in, is that what?
Very close. The 30% equates to the 294.
30% of a million would have been 300,000, so it's not quite a million. So that was one thing I wanted to make sure we all understood. The other thing was the, the bonuses that, that the teachers got last year, how much did that amount to?
The pandemic pay? The pandemic pay was approximately $600,000, and that, of course, was prior to the 1.7 million.
Yeah, you found 600, and how much?
Approximately 600,000. I don't remember the exact number.
And that's a one-time, that's a one-time thing?
And there was an insurance holiday, so the whole bill was 700 something.
The insurance holiday was 125?
Mike, the reason I ask that question is because I'm, I'm interested in, in us keeping our board as far as the salary study.
I appreciate that.
And if that was part of the salary study money, then that, that affects it. So what's your salary study number, ma'am?
Well, let me just comment on the point that you just made. That money could not be part of, of the salary study, because that money is one-time.
Right, right, that's, yeah, and I thought that I, I know it's not part of the salary study, so it's a one-time bonus. But what's the number we have in the salary study that, that we said? Because honestly, I think we thought it was 600,000 for three years. And this would have been the third year with 600,000, and I think your number is different than ours.
And I want to say it was around 1.1 million dollars. And that was to meet the 2018 minimum market value. That is not to help us become competitive in 2021. That is solely to meet the 2018 minimum market value. So unfortunately, what has happened is the external factors of society that have occurred since we sat down and agreed to do it over a three-year cycle have not been advantageous to a three-year implementation. They've actually been detrimental to achieving the closing of the gap. And so frankly, that, that study is almost null and void and really needs to be re-conducted in order to create a new baseline. But to answer your question, it was about 1.1, 1.2 million.
And it also included step increases for the year, so that the employer would get their annual yearly experience credit also, which run about 500,000 annually.
That wasn't in the presentation we were given by the school board at that point. That was not in there.
Are, are you referencing when Dr. Parker was here, Mr. Sealy? I know that we have, we've had that all around many times.
It was in writing, it was handed to us, Mr. Thomas and I both agreed, the 600,000 year, for the years. We also agreed that we were somewhere in the, in the last year of 1.6, and we were actually above the 600,000. So we're, we're kind of, and now, and let me just take it one step further. If we had to fund an additional 400,000 for what you're losing in lottery money, what you're going to say is a loss, and we're going to call it an increase, because we're going to have to increase 400,000 just to make you even there. I mean, there's going to have to be some sort of, of line drawn, just, just numbers-wise, because there's no way to find that error.
Well, I don't want us to spend our time revisiting and recashing what we've talked about numerous times from multiple years ago.
Oh, we keep coming back to the 2018.
Let's let me finish my statement, thank you. I do think the question that you brought up is a viable one. I think we should talk about it at another meeting, since it is not currently an agenda item. And I think if we're waiting for the general assembly to close and see where we stand, we'll make note of your request that we revisit salary when we come back to the table. Is that fair?
And, and, and make sure you understand, my, my question is, is in no way critical. My question and statement was to assure that we did what we said we were going to do, which is what people are supposed to do in this world. Understand circumstances and the budget wouldn't let us do it. We're going to try to do it, or I, I would like to try to do it. I just need to know if my number is the number that I was given, or the number you gave is the number. And I, I know it's, it's like building a house, building a building. If I build it now, it's going to cost less than I built it three years from now. We probably should have factored that in there. We didn't. It is what it is. I just want to know how to get it. It's probably not germane to our discussion, so I'll be quiet.
But Mr. Thomas, in a way, it is germane to the discussion, because we, we gave a number that does not do what they need to be done. We thought about it at the time, but now it's insufficient to meet their needs. So I think it is worth discussing.
Unless, unless we are going to deviate from our normal one-time thought process, this money is all one-time money, which couldn't be used for salaries. So the two are really.
Not related.
Unless we deviate from our one-time thing.
And if we do have it, it's a big monetary impact to our budget.
Yes.
That would be something we would all have to understand. If we gave another X number of dollars right now for salaries, there might not be X number of dollars next year. So it's, there's only a few dollars out there. They either get them now or you get them later. If you get them later, they're worth less. That's all I'm saying. Moving on.
Anything else, Mr. Underwood?
Okay, moving right into item number three is fiscal year 2020-21 budget update. So we just wanted to give you some updates associated with what we've been monitoring through the House and the Senate. Also alignment of our appropriations to the school budget, and then an ADM update. So Marcia is going to kick it off with the state updates.
Thank you. Before that, I'd like to clarify, just on the anthem funds, that it, it is not a general fund transfer on the appropriation document that comes from the locality to the schools. It is in the other fund revenue code on that appropriation document. So I wanted to clarify that for the, for the record on where those fundings are in appropriations. For fiscal year 21 budget update, they have had their special session. They, they have been a little long with the special session. It wasn't expected to be as long. However, we do have some news that is looking very favorable for education. In House Bill 5005, the sales tax is looking at holding it harmless. They are looking at delaying adjustments to the state payments for ADM reductions. And they also are looking at delaying the restrictions of the infrastructure and operations per pupil funding. So those would be free things. That's the main caveats, caveats in that House Bill 5005 that are dealing with the education on the internet under that House bill. For the Senate Bill 5015, they have introduced COVID-19 relief funds to support the standard of qualities. So at this time, neither one of those bills are showing a large impact or reductions to education in the state budget and special session. With the alignment of the appropriations with the school budgets and reviewing our data for the current health insurance census and our employees' plan choices for October 1, 2020, we are again seeing that they are choosing different plans. And we budget in October of the year, so now you're budgeting a year ahead. And now the elections are coming in for what the employees are going on. So we are seeing that they are also, we would see that we would have budgeted savings of 300,000 in that budget line at this time. So we are asking to reduce 300,000 on the instruction category, since that is where the majority of our employees that elect health insurance are located. Increase the 150,000 appropriation in the maintenance budget, in which was cut during the appropriation document in adopting the budget. And increase the 150,000 appropriation to administration attendance and health budget. The administration attendance health budget is less than $2 million, and the maintenance budget is around, like, close to $4 million. However, the instructional budget is $40 million. So a $300,000 adjustment in that instructional category can be much more manageable than cutting 150,000 out of a less than $2 million budget. So that would be our request in aligning the appropriations of the school budget to the appropriation document in which you all pass for passing our budget.
And so Marcia, before we move into the third item under number three, is there anything that you need from the board at this moment? Are you asking for them to make a motion associated with this right now?
It doesn't have to be right now, but we would need action from the board of supervisors on aligning the budget.
I would need, y'all would need to spin that into answer, uh, regular requests for the board to add.
Okay, okay. And so your next board meeting is the 13th?
Correct.
Okay, so we get it to you by this Thursday?
It goes out this Thursday.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the third item under three is average daily membership update. And so I'm certain that if you've been reading the newspaper, or you receive one of the compilation emails that come out regularly regarding school-based news, you've seen various divisions monitoring ADM and talking about the reduction of ADM. And some divisions are being hit in a significant fashion, and others' impact has been a bit smaller. We were anticipating around a $600,000 loss. But in scrubbing all of our numbers and looking at the data, we have found that our ADM loss will be projected around $325,000. That is about 60 students. We were expecting double. We thought we would be around 120. That tends to be what's, uh, school divisions that are like-sized, anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 students. That tends to be the number that we've been hearing from our regional peers. And so we are, we are pleased to say that we're at 60. However, we wish we were at zero, but that equates to about a $325,000 loss. We are hoping that the general assembly does, of course, pass the House Bill 5005 to hold us harmless associated with that. And I have been lobbying, I've been sending letters to our legislators. I have one that is ready to go for our school board members to send. I just was waiting on today's calculation of where we truly stand. So that gives you an idea as to where we are. Please keep in mind, our final ADM is calculated on March 31st, 2021. And we will continue to monitor it, and we do report monthly to our school board on ADM. You know that our magician Marcia has done a beautiful job planning for ADM, to the point that we were seven students off this past year, which is phenomenal. You don't come across that type of projection often. So we're, we're pleased with where we are. I mean, hope by March 31st, if some of those losses, and some of them were due to people choosing to homeschool or enroll their children in private schools because of COVID, we're hoping that when we get back to a model that is more face-to-face, that some of those students will re-enroll. And we will be reaching out to them to entice them to come back. So we'll use that as part of our marketing strategy to recapture those, those lost memberships. So any questions on item number three? Those are the current updates that we thought would be important for you to be aware of in relation to schools and finances.
Now, the, the ADM number, like you said, I, I saw legislation that it floated that said they can hold for harmless. So there's a possibility you won't top with that $300,000.
There is, but it has not been passed. And I actually had a meeting this morning, on this afternoon, with VAST, the Association of Urbanity Superintendents. And they indicated that they feel that that is actually going to be pushed to January, that they don't see that moving through the special session, that ultimately they think it would be moved to January. So it might be some time before we actually have a final indication.
ADM is done in March?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, there's a possibility, it's, it's like the 300,000 she was just talking about, and, and that 300,000. There's a possibility we can float some of these things in January and say, okay, in January, we see you've got 300,000 you need because of the ADM, or 300,000 you don't need because of the ADM.
Yeah, we definitely could revisit that, Mr. Thomas, once we have more information.
Certainly. We're not asking for anything with the ADM at this point, because we've, the elementary schools are just starting on September 8th. So they have not even been in a whole, a whole month. So ADM is very, very early in this process, and we will monitor it monthly. So we just wanted to give an update as of what September is. But I'm certainly not concerned with that at this point. I will monitor it monthly until we can get closer.
But I mean, my, my point is not to, you know, harp on the number, but the process is fluid.
It is.
So we can theoretically be as fluid as the process.
Yes, we will keep you abreast of any updates that we get in relation to all of those House Bill and Senate bills. We certainly, once we know more, we can certainly let you know. And at this time, I will turn it over to Chair Dr. Rollins-Sells for item number four. So item number four addresses the relationship between the board of supervisors and the school board. And I want to preface that with saying that. And I want to preface that with saying that on behalf of the school board, there is a desire to have an intentional conversation and a willingness to put forth the work to strengthen the relationship. There are many nuances related to schools and county. Lots of those are tied into monetary stipulations and processes and protocols and things of that nature. Just we did it earlier today. You can see how that 30% and this rule changing and that regulation and all of these different things can have a huge impact. We also understand that we are the largest employer. And most of the time when we come to the table, our price tag is pretty hefty. And that is related to the work that we're doing. And so with all of those things considered and said, one of the questions that I can remember asking when I first came on the board is, is there training that happens between school board and board supervisor? So that there is effective management and fiscal responsibility? You know, for that time it was no. I am aware that each board has their own separate training. But based on some of our historical trends and past rules, I do think that it is important that we put the time and the effort and the energy into increasing our communication. I do believe that the Board of Supervisors has been open to that as we most recently listened to the request to have a joint board retreat. And our board can respond favorably that that is something that we would like to do. So I wanted to open with those comments to say that we recognize the need and we are really able to do the work that goes into that. In terms of moving that on forward, the response that I felt to the chair was that our board desired to schedule that not between Thanksgiving and Christmas, as it had previously been proposed. Of course, where the birds of COVID and retro July and that sort of thing. And so we suggested that we move it to January. And so if that is still something that the board would like to do, would like to go ahead and move forward with that. Going into that meeting, we would like to suggest that the purpose and objectives of that meeting are very clear and outlined. We know that both boards have a lot of things on our plate. So we don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. We do want to go in and be very clear about what the intended outcome is. And with that, just like with this joint board meeting, we'd like to work together to create an agenda. And we have a question about a facilitator. And so anytime that you have work being for joint relationship building, there typically is a third-party facilitator. And if that's something that the boards would like to entertain, I think we need to get that ironed out as well. And so we'd like to set up a meeting with whoever you would like to appoint as the chair so that we can move forward with planning those things so that we can take that into.
Well, we had actually looked into facilitating, we were gonna activate facilitator or something that we were already set up to do. Well, we needed a date to get the facilitator. And I mean, the facility, I've got a pretty good idea, but we needed, again, a date. Without that, it can't really work, even one.
So while we're still in agreement to host it, don't we have January? So I have that your next board meeting is the 13th, is that correct?
Well, what I can get to you there.
Well, if we can get a date.
A date we could get.
So if you will come in to have a date, both, we will be next Monday for our board meeting. And so I'd ask that my members, we check their calendar. And if we can come back with two dates, then we'll present those to you so we can get that sorted out.
Chair, this is all. The date depending on what dates are available, wherever this meeting is going to be held, except for being held here.
It won't be held here, right?
So if, if you could get available dates and get them, the chair, the board that likes to want to do.
Yeah, we could probably get available dates.
Well, if you send me available dates, I'll send that out and ask them on what his final days too.
So by the January, after the meeting?
After.
Well, it happens, yeah, January.
Yes, sir. All right, and then item B on this agenda is communication. So in the past, we have had joint board meetings, we have had two-on-two. There have been times where we are on the agenda, actual regular scheduled meeting. And so those are things that we very much like to have a conversation about and to continue. I know that there have been perhaps some unofficial conversations about the joint board meetings for the two-on-two. But if we could have an intentional conversation about the proposed plans, what are the norms and protocols going into that and what the expected outcome is. From our standpoint, the intention of that was, there were questions that were coming up. There were lots of insight that was being asked for in terms of, okay, so why computer versus text quotes, those sorts of things, just as a example. We have at times shared pictures of things that are in the press and got the week and that sort of thing. In order to make sure that we were operating with full transparency post-meeting, minutes were sent out and copied to everyone of those boards. And so, you know, sometimes those minutes asked for the notification that they need to receive. Most of the time, it was not really sent. And so in talking about our communication, I would really like for us to, are not our processes to come to and leave in in terms of how can the boards work together so that we can be abreast of the information and answer any questions that you may have. And I think some good things have come out of that. And so.
Mr. Wolf?
I'll be honest, I don't know big time with the two-on-twos. I, I think that if we're going to, we haven't met in a while. I think that to be open and transparent, this is on camera. And I think that joint meetings quarterly and maybe during budget season, twice or two or three times during budget season would be much more productive when you have everyone there. I've been part of the two-on-two meetings. And I'm not blaming anyone about saying anything is, but two-on-two things, a lot of two-on-twos sometimes can be misconstrued. I, I know that Mr. Cully and the superintendent, I think the staff meets. So the need for the two-on-two to me is if the staffs, if the staffs are meeting and then we have the joint meetings quarterly, I just don't see the need for doing it. Because transparency is right here on that, on that end.
Mr. Underwood?
Between two-on-two, I don't think the structure is advantageous for either party. My feeling is that if you want to have a two-on-two, then it should come back as a conversation and understanding from each board. And we very seldomly get a report about the two-on-two conversation as a report, which I think is detrimental to understanding. I think if you want to do that, and I agree with Mr. Black, it's good for everyone to hear the conversation with their own ears and leave it to your own interpretation rather than get it secondhand. So I, I would be in favor of more joint meetings rather than two-on-twos. So some of the things that I've read as understanding coming out of the two-on-twos were things that I certainly hadn't discussed or talked about or agreed to. So I'd much rather hear it firsthand.
Mr. Ford?
I can go either way. I, I'd see some value in two-on-twos, but if you want to meet regularly and quarterly, like this, have staff meet as well, I'd pop that.
Mr. Wolf?
I'm fine, in a way, also. I think my biggest concern on the two-on-two is that sometimes in discussion, things can you, out here, oh, so, so it's going to happen or something's going to happen. Whereas we all know that we, the chair, not approve anything. You know, it has to be a board decision before it, they have to have it. And when it's presented with social conversation, it's, oh, yes, this is going to happen and it's all in trouble. So that was my one concern about the two-on-twos. Plus it eats up the staff time, you know, it eats up your time, which you never settle, so. Unless you're in a meeting. So, you know, maybe the joint meetings would be better.
Scott?
The two-on-twos were originally designed to enhance communication between the two boards and basically just pass information back and forth. If they are not accomplishing that goal, then, then I guess it's time to let that go. What you do need to have is communication between the two. And understand, I've, I've said this before, and it doesn't always hit home, but, but the relationship between the two boards, because of the way the budget process works, is by definition an adversary relationship. So the more we can talk through things, the better we will be. The reality is, we will never give you as much money as you think you should get. And we will probably always feel like we gave you more money than you should get. That, that is the, by definition, how the relationships work. It's not right. That's the cards we're dealt. And more communication helps us get through that. Because the reality is, we all want the same thing. And I always say, you know, if you can send kids to college or a job, whatever, they will be better off than not getting in trouble with you. So whatever way I can support you, I'll be happy to do it.
I agree with the fact that you're acting on your promise about the adversarial relationship. It is part of the infrastructure. I think that, I think that I'm fair in speaking on behalf of the board. What becomes a bit frustrating, to be honest, is in a public meeting, there are questions that are being asked and there's a lack of clarity. And that could easily revolve if we had the conversation that got into the centerfold. And so at the end of the day, thank you, everyone, for helping us and addressing the issue officially. But the goal is to make sure that we are, especially when we're talking in terms of funding. If we are treating something as one thing and you're treating it as something else, there's not clarity there. And, and you can't, you can't be effective if they're not working in that way. I think that according to meetings, the board is agreeable to. And having additional joint board meetings are also agreeable to. And I'd ask my board, if anybody, if I'm, that's speaking on behalf of the appropriate member of the process together. My understanding is that we're okay with not doing the two-on-twos if you have the opportunity to have the joint meetings. Because we have to move past a lack of clarity in public settings.
I had one thing to that, and I definitely agree with what you said. Part of what creates the adversarial relationship is not school board or supervisor. But we never get the budget from, from Richmond until we're both halfway done, or done, basically. So you, you may get more money and then we say, oh, oh, you got more money, you didn't really need this. You may get less money. That's part of the problem. The problem's not us, it's the whole system, the way it works. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
I agree.
Mr. Underwood?
Madam Chairman, can you speak to, talk about clarity? Can you perhaps, without naming names, give an example of the clarity that you feel that is not taking place?
I will.
Just a shadow.
I'll give an example, so the anthem funds, I think that's a great example. If we are accounting for it in one way and you're accounting for it in a different way, at some point, we need to follow the same thing. That's an example. I can remember, again, when I first came on the board, there were comments made about how we overspent the budget. And that just was not true. And I can remember a meeting where our numbers that we were reporting said one thing and then numbers that we were reporting from the county was different. And we had to improve the process that these numbers need to be reconciled prior to implementing the agenda at a public meeting. So things of that nature. So processes need to be clarified. Again, that, that was a good question, that was an example of a question of my lived experience. Because I remember speaking up and saying, what is this about? Why should we be following balances for seconds and accounting for it for the same time? So that is an example where there was a lack of clarity about two specific incidents.
Madam Chair, I would hope that if we're not going to have a two-on-two meeting, that we would supplement those with joint meetings. We would have as many joint meetings as we had two-on-two. Because that would, that would make communication even more succinct and, and more widespread with all the members present as opposed to two-on-two. And then having the information filtered through those two persons, through the rest of the members. Then if, if those two-on-twos are supplemented by, or replaced by meetings like this, then we can have straight-up communication with no filters in between.
I think the other thing that happened, again, and this was just my experience, there were times where we would have a joint meeting and we're limited to time and so we set the agenda. But questions would then come up that were prompted by something else. And then by the end of the meeting, we had not covered the things that we needed to cover. And it wasn't that anyone was not being focused, they were honest questions that needed to be addressed. And so the two-on-two was a place to address some of those questions and provide that. But minutes were sent out to address that as well. So what I have encouraged my board is that you need to read your email. I have asked my board to immediately respond with the notice that they received. And if there, if, I've asked them to review things so that when they come to the meeting, that there may be items that can be tabled or requested for the next meeting, but to not derail the, the second in the work order. So those are just practices, I think, that I have asked the board to say.
Madam Chair, I would just like to suggest that we come up with a schedule or a calendar with quarterly meetings and possibly add more during budget season. Because one meeting during budget season is not enough because we have so many questions from board to board. So possibly maybe January, February, March, we have budget meetings with you all once a month. And then we have maybe three other quarterly meetings. Because I feel like that would really be good for communication. And I see two board supervisors shaking hands too. Because I, I really feel like there is so much meat to cover for the budget for you all and us. And that way, we wouldn't feel so rushed because you all usually take with us right before meeting. And so we get cut off and you all come up with more questions and then we try to answer. and then we try to answer. And so, I think if we have at least one each of those three months, it would help you all, because we have to have our budget pretty much done by January, the first part of January, while y'all are still working and in the throes of the year. So, that's my opinion.
And I think in addition to, if there needs to be some additional, like, things to be supplemented, where I would imagine the staffs will still be meeting, like, as far as superintendent, they're probably still be meeting from time to time, so they could be moderately supplemented to put onto a general way of joint meetings.
I agree. That's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Madam Chair, I would also agree with what's been said, or echo what's been said. Whether we call it two-on-two, or whether we do joint meetings, the issue is clarity, and being able to express what the concerns is, and, you know, speak frankly, and that's, that's the purpose of. I think this has been a very quick meeting, by personal, I think it's going very well. I think we've talked about some things, and I think we've moved forward in a positive direction. And the only other thing I would add is, in the beginning, the two-on-twos were never designed to be policy makers or decision makers. That was not the purpose of two-on-twos. Two-on-twos was the purpose of more chairman meeting, and talking about some of the desires, and what some of the concerns were. And then, each chairman was then supposed to go back to level and express those issues and concerns. But it was never to set policy or begin to see that we need to buy it. So, whether we do two-on-twos, or what we do, the joint type meeting, as long as we can meaningfully talk, get clarity and understanding. We may not always agree, but at least we would always understand the other board's perception. And I think that's important.
So, Chairman Stills, hearing the discussion, thank everyone on the boards. I think that the whole consensus of the body language, quarterly, it's been a duty to generate some more budgets, that it makes sense to be formed.
Right. And we're gonna have to wait till we get into budget to see where it makes sense. That's gonna be the key component, because it may not make any sense in January. We may be, based on how our budget comes together, it may, we're gonna have to wait and see how the budget rolls, how it becomes different every year, based on.
It's never been together.
Right.
Ever been together.
And it's never been together, you even presented to us until when?
March.
But the school's already, we presented in January.
But at least you could listen to our budget in January, so you would have an idea of what we.
Yeah, because we won't be on the record.
Right.
Yeah, our budget is, because all the departments have to come, so we're gonna be, I mean, there won't be any answers.
But I think, just based on your feedback, if we could present the budget in the joint workshop, prior to it being presented in February, to the public, that has been some of the feedback that we've received from the board in the past. Those might help have that information.
Maybe in January, you could present what you're working with, for like, an hour session, before the board of supervisors meetings. In February, in March, we have dedicated meetings, saying this is, we're gonna sit down and take, you know, two hours or whatever to go over the budget in detail. It's kinda like, I think it was Jeff said, we need things to write in. So, if you come the first time and say, and some of us are repetitive learners, so if you come to us in January and say, this is what we're working on, these are our top priorities, then in February, we'll be on our second, look at all those things, and stick a little bit better. And then by March, on the third time, it'll definitely stick a little bit better.
It'll definitely be in January, February, when we get their presentation, because we're willing to have our money.
And that's okay. We'll, we'll provide you with a high-level overview of where we are, so that you get that introductory insight, that will then grow, as we have certainty in what we're presenting, and you grow an awareness of what you're dealing with as well. That's fine. We can make up our information.
Correct. We also have CIP that we could discuss in January as well, so we could combine both of those processes together.
Mr. Roger Wood, for me, to get a real look at what we're spending, I'd like to see what you've spent to that point, and what you have remaining, in terms of dollars. I don't think you have to go into each category in depth, but I'd like to, an overview, that you spent thirty-five percent of your, your instructional budget, and we're at forty percent of the year, which means you're moving along pretty good. But if you get to your instructional budget, and you spent sixty percent, or only forty percent of the school year is gone, then we've got some issues that we're gonna have to make some adjustments or some things that increase, that you have, maybe not, or something has happened extraordinary that we need to take a look at. For me, looking at those line items really helps to understand how our spending is going. The same way that I asked the county to do, is to, if we do that, then we can better understand our spending habits, as well as how we're spending and managing the funds of the children in school and the county.
We'll make note of that request. Mrs. Stevens does provide an overview of the accounts, and where we stand each month to the board. And so, that's a readily accessible report that we can certainly bring when we meet during those budgetary months.
I think that would be high-level, we would have to go into.
Certainly. I provide a monthly high-level by category and by revenue stream with that. And in addition, you know, schools are a little different, some, a lot of our state funding doesn't start actually coming in until January, when we start getting in it. And then, also, our teachers are paid in the summer, that accrue back into the fiscal year, so you have those different nuances with school funding, so you're, you're certainly not a one-twelve, one-twelve, one-twelve each month, or on a quarterly basis. But that, that report is provided to the school board on a monthly basis, and next Monday, I will be providing September to them.
And I would just ask if you would give us an opportunity to work out that those agenda items, my, my hesitation is that because there's so many nuances, that, that could possibly be taken out of context, versus high-level, like you said, of, you know, are we noticing that, you know, like we presented tonight, this change? Therefore, I think that's different than category lines today. I agree. I think it is too. So, is that something that you want to?
Well, we'll work out as, yeah, I mean, I can't do that until we get.
But not asking for dates.
Okay, I mean, we'll work on that, yeah. Because the rest of the board has said, so we'll, at four meetings, we will talk about dates for those things we do frequently.
And just another suggestion, just as a practice that we work with in our board as well, to formalize dates in terms of culture, or in terms of, of race and understanding, so that we're clear as to what everybody is walking away with, and that everybody has the same oversight. So, I'm not asking for commitment of dates, but I'm asking sort of commitment of more meetings.
I think, I mean, we've got all the board members here, Clay, Nancy, Brad, Morgan Jones. Nobody's saying no, but there are dates that we're gonna have to set, I believe.
Thank you.
Well, if you want, just one of us.
We really set those for all purpose.
And we can, yeah, we can do that.
That's a good, that's a good, people find some agenda items next week. Just put on a consent agenda that we scheduled, January, November, March, and June, September. Yeah, whatever, I can remember, I think you all piece them, or you're back in. I always pick it out.
We'll get six weeks, six weeks in a year, so it's every other month, seven.
We might raise that for something.
Yeah, yeah, that's one, something. Yeah, July and August, and.
We don't, we don't, we usually always meet July or July, and some I don't meet in August.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I think the final item, before we get to the conversation regarding Germana Community College, is mine, in relation to, for the Roman numeral two, categorized as one supervisor's communication with CCP employees. And I would like to preface this by extending an apology regarding the timing of this conversation. My intent was to discuss this in a two-on-two over the summer, and obviously, when that did not transpire, I mentioned it during a staffing meeting to Mr. Colley and Mr. Carton, that this is a topic that I had hoped to discuss at a two-on-two, rather than a joint meeting. I do want to bring to your attention a concern that has been redundant in nature, and that is that when our staff communicates with board of supervisors, meaning that if they're submitting to emails, or texting, or calling, whatever type of communication modality they're selecting to use, some of them are receiving responses back from board supervisor spouses. And so, I wanted to share that with you, because they are then in turn contacting central office, and they are sharing the communication with the assistant superintendent, or the chief operations officer, or myself. And I want to share that with you, because as constitutional officers, I think it's really important that the communication remains amongst those that are the elected officials. The person that has taken to responding to the employees on these multiple communication venues, has been reporting to speak on behalf of the collective board.
No, in fact, we're gonna stop here now, because I'm gonna read you Facebook messages, and I'd like you to provide who it is for. You have, I mean, tonight, since you're gonna bring it up, I want in public session, I wanna see what you're referring to.
If I could.
No, 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 I'd like to see, no, I'd like to see.
I'm actually being interrupted, Mr. Stevens.
I'd like to back to our, you know, we've been down this path, all of us, everybody has courses that are in the runs. So, first of all, let's not forget that. Second of all, I have the email conversation, and it's a Facebook conversation, that one of your teachers had with my wife over a week, now you're gonna know.
Mr. Stevens, first of all, you have interrupted me, and I am professionally trying to address a matter of concern.
Better finish your, go ahead.
And if you haven't done, we certainly can have that conversation separately. My intent is not to identify the person. If you would like to have a more confidential conversation as board members, I'm happy to do that, but I feel it would be unprofessional for me to put a person's name out in this venue. As I stated, I would have preferred to address this in a two-on-two, but that was not possible. So, in addition to the spouse reflecting collective board comments, the person was also stating inaccurate information about board matters. Also indicated that they had access to other emails, and in communication with this person, indicated that other staff members that had contacted their spouse, and that that spouse had already responded to these other members, and identified these people. So, I'm concerned about the confidentiality, I'm concerned about that practice, and quite frankly, I'm concerned that it rose to the level where staff members unsolicited were forwarding it to us to be addressed. And so, I just want to simply request that if our board, if our staff members reach out to you, as an employee, or as, of course, a Caroline citizen, that you, as the board of supervisor, respond that to them, rather than a spouse who is reading their email, or text, or whatever Facebook post it may be, and responding that on behalf of the board or that person. And so, you know, I certainly don't want to belabor the point, but I just would like to make that known, that I would request that on behalf of our employees.
When your employees contact anybody on board, anybody, and if they contact somebody on Facebook, and I had the whole conversation.
Sure.
It was actually contact. I don't have a Facebook page that I'm doing instant messaging. So, therefore, as I'm looking at the instant messages being sent back and forth, can you do more, I'd like the kindergarteners to see you read again. Thank you so much, I welcome, I will bring Dr. Seuss and say, oh, can you see, can you see the hungry caterpillar, the tortoise and the hare, the ugly duckling? I mean, then back from your employee, can you tell Jeff to send me an email? We've been asked to ask all the board members for emails by the superintendent and other staff. So, I'm contacting on behalf of what I've been asked. So, when you ask employees to contact us, and they actually contact whomever on Facebook, I'm at a loss, because this conversation goes on and on, it's about books, and it's about reading, and it's about, I'll send her an email, and here's my phone number for your husband to call me. I'm going on vacation, you know, I may not be able to take the call where we're going. I mean, if that's really what we're talking about, because I did email, Mr. Thomas and I actually compared emails that we sent to teachers on bequest of the, of the people that actually were told to send us emails, their supervisors, the school board, whoever, they said what they were directed to send us emails. They were doing it, and I was responding. There are relationships in the academy, so if somebody has a relationship with my wife, and wants to discuss something with her, I can't really stop that. And if they wanna report that as something that was nefarious, I'm sorry, I mean, it's all here, and it's on the recorded conversations. And I sent ten or fifteen emails. I don't always have access to a computer, so that may have gone from my wife's computer, because I was in a vault and can't send it. But I'd written plenty of emails to plenty of employees that were school board employees, that asked me all kinds of questions, and I responded to them, as did every other board member, because we had a board meeting and actually talked about, at opening board comments, how many emails we'd all sent. So, if we're gonna go down this path, it's, it's a slippery slope. If they contact my wife, and they ask her questions, she is free to answer their question, not on behalf of me, and she says in here, that I am standing over her shoulder, she's writing this now, because I didn't have time to go and, to get, sit down on a Facebook message, and sit down and type it, it's her, not, not mine, even if I'd typed it, it wouldn't have mattered. But it says here clearly, Jeff is standing over my shoulder, reading, and, and reading to me what, what I'm writing. So, if that's gonna come back to the school board staff or superintendent, then somebody needs to call me, not come to a board, joint board meeting and go, we have a board member whose wife, okay, so that eliminates a couple of people, who's responding to people on Facebook, yep, but it's also responding to all kinds of things about the reading program and other stuff that's going on in the schools. And that's what this was basically about, except for the board, here's a phone number, he can call me, I'll be on vacation. And that was back in, in June. June. So, if that's an issue, then you should have called me, or you can have Mr. Spalding call me, you can have Mr. Copeland call me, you can have Mrs. Carson call me, Mrs. Rollins could have called me.
I'm gonna interject here, because we just finished talking about board relations, and this is an example of a crossroad. Okay? I did not hear your name's call, and I think out of respect, it would not be appropriate to attach things.
It's not appropriate to do this, if the superintendent or you have an issue, there is a telephone.
I agree.
Well, that's just what we did.
Madam Chair.
To a meeting.
I would like to, I'll say, interject.
Mr. Underwood.
Excuse me.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I think that both boards need to remember that, when there are budget times, you request school employees to send us emails. And I try to respond to every email that's sent on my behalf, and letting people know that this is my opinion, and that board can do whatever it wishes, but same way with the, with the statute, that's my, I got emails from many people. from many people, and I try to respond to all of those. And I'm, I'm not sure about whatever issue, but I, but I would hope that if I were to do something, I would hope that you would call me and call, call me saying, Mr. Underwood, you know, that's not, I would hope someone would say, if I'm out of bounds, I, I wanna know, I wanna know. But I try to make sure that it's above board and always on a professional level. Sometimes, and I feel like saying a bit I probably shouldn't say, but I just, again, as we, we're talking about board relationships of working together as a team, then we, we have to be able to look at the issue. And I think sometimes we look at the person, and we, this may be if personal versus issue. I wanna make sure, we don't have a practice of talking to employees, that's not a practice of this board, I can tell you that, I can promise you that. So it's not a practice that, where there's an issue that needs to be resolved, and I think we just nip it in the bud, resolve it, this is not on your behalf as a superintendent, for your employees, this is not what my expectation, and then we resolve it, and we move on.
I would agree with you, Mr. Underwood, and that is why I was deliberate in my desire to address this in a different forum, and exactly why I brought it up to Mr. Perton and Mr. Colley. I asked for their feedback on how to proceed, and, and when it, when I spoke with them, I said, well, what I'm hearing you say is then, the next opportunity that we have to be together, I will present this. And they were, they were very much aware of this topic, and there was no alternate.
Right.
Offering that was provided. And so I was waiting for the opportunity, I did not want it to become an issue that was personalized, I wanted it to be a very general conversation, I was very deliberate, did not use any identifying pronouns, to even let you know it was a male or a female, I did not identify a context of the actual documents, because that was not my point, was not to pull out exactly who was at the root of this issue. It's simply that I'm, I'm respectfully requesting that if our employee reaches out to a Board of Supervisor member, that it is a Board of Supervisor member that actually responds to them on behalf of their email, whether it was something that was related to us saying, please feel free to contact your Board of Supervisors, or whether it was self-initiated by that employee. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Listen, Law, first. My first comment is, nobody, yet one of our staff members, or in my opinion, one of your staff members, should be contacting people on Facebook. You're not gonna contact me that way, it's private, it's from my family, and a close friend. And I don't have a budget for a private secretary or a phone answer. So if you call my house, you may get my husband. And if I am cooking dinner, you may ask me a question. He's going to tell your employee she said this, because I don't have a secretary connected to a five, so occasionally on simple things, you're gonna get that type, because I don't have somebody there to act full time. And if I had someone who's computer savvy, and I know them all the time, and when I was working, could answer things for me, I would have given them just like a secretary, an instruction, but it would have been from me. But Facebook is just asking for trouble and to stir up things. It happens every budget season, and it happens at certain points. You know, we don't ask our employees, other than our citizens, they have a right to contact you all, but they don't need to have a right, or they should not be sending thanks as employees for you on Facebook. It's, it's just not a good way to do business.
If I could interject, just to take back some of Mr. Underwood's point, I thought we could go down a litany of hypothetical situations. I think that the tenor of this conversation has happened more than once, and so the general ask is that, yes, citizens can call, we all get phone calls, we all get emails, but we must always be careful in representing the board. As Mr. Underwood stated, we are one person, we have one vote, express your interest, but most certainly, no one outside of the constitutional office is shifting to be on behalf of the board. And I would prefer.
I've been sitting here listening to this. On Facebook, all's fair in love and war, everybody knows that. I mean, people will say things, call you names, and so forth, would never say to that to you face. But this is surprising to me, how long's this been going on, Dr. Calver?
So, Mr. Spalding, I would just interject to say that out of respect, and again, in honoring board relationships, I don't think that we need to go down this avenue any farther. I think that we all have an understanding of how we should conduct ourselves.
I don't either, and I'm, I'm not trying to stir up anything, but if someone calls me about school, or a Board of Supervisor, the first thing I'm gonna say is, you called this one, you called that, that's it. Game over. And not try to answer it, or all it listens, and say, hey, you wanna answer this question, or whatever. We don't play those games. But is this a real problem? I mean, it's what I'm asking, because I don't, this is brand new, maybe any other board member knows this?
Mr. Spalding.
I know it's happened, but I don't address it, and I, and I, and for every Facebook message that comes along, I completely delete it and ignore it with, with impunity. I, I don't address anything on Facebook when communications to me on Facebook are, are not answered ever.
Mr. Copeland, as the chair, I'm gonna redirect this conversation, because this is an example of how we have four additional things on the budget that are really in public interest, and I think we've exhausted just how.
Mr. White, do you have a question? No, I mean, I, we're on, I mean, I'd like to get this out to, we're on the issue of communication, because I think it's pretty important, and I think that if, like, you had a government teacher, I'm just gonna give a hypothetical, if you had a government teacher at your high school that was spouting off anti-Trump or anti-Biden stuff, you would address it, right? I mean, it's like, this is political, right? So, so, yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'm using as a hypothetical, what I'm saying is, when it comes to budget time, so that's on the national level, so it's political on the national level there, the local level should be no different. We talk about communication, and Mr. Thomas hit the nail on the head, it's designed to be adversarial, but when students are sent home letters to come to the Board of Supervisors because they're not getting enough, the schools aren't getting enough money, that, that, that's kinda like the same thing as a pro-Biden or a pro-Trump speech from, in other words, it's becoming political to us. And I don't think that happens in other jurisdictions, as far as, I think maybe the SCA will send out stuff on behalf of the teachers, but coming directly from, you know, a superintendent's office, or something like that, when it comes to the budget time, that, that, I think sometimes can be damaging.
When this, when it's put out by the school system to contact Board of Supervisors, and when people contact us, however they contact us, and this is a Facebook contact, and Mr. Underwood said, or Mr. Spalding said, Facebook is wah-wah rap. When they ask.
Yes, they definitely are.
I, I read what was going on, I responded, I couldn't sit down and hide it. And I work in a secure facility, I'm trying to get, as Nancy said, my wife's very computer savvy, I'll be the first to tell you. It is very simple to say, here's the email I wrote for this person, you can send the same email, make these changes, and it goes out. I don't have, we don't, none of us have secretaries, none of us have staff at the county level that does any of this for us, it's us. But I take real offense that we're doing this in an open board meeting, and that's why I'm not, I'm not gonna just shut down on this, because I think a phone call should, Mr. Colley can't call me up and go, your wife can't do that. I mean, are any of your board members, are you gonna call any of your board members and tell them they can't do something?
I do believe that we have a record, a relationship, that if someone brought a concern regarding a board member to me, I would go to the board chair and mention it to the board chair, and then it would be that person's responsibility to determine what pathway they would take that information. Now, in talking with Mr. Colley, that is not the establishment that you have amongst your board, and we're respectful of that. But I didn't realize that until Mr. Colley and Mr. Perton responded to me bringing it to them.
And I have seen you many times since the day of this, and tonight. You and I spoke after several meetings that were here out in Parkland, and nothing was mentioned. You and I had one-on-one conversation, there was Mr. Black and I with a conversation with these two different occasions, nothing was said.
Again, I would like to redirect the conversation, because this is not a Sarah Calverick matter, this is a simple request of how we can do business moving forward. And that is that. And so I think, I think everybody has a common understanding of the matter, and I don't know that it is fruitful for us to continue to banter back and forth, I think it's counterproductive. So if everyone's comfortable, I think there's common understanding, and we move forward with that. The next topic of conversation for schools to address is the possibility of Germana Community College facilities, and that actually is the Board of Supervisors' item.
I, I don't want it to just be my item, I want it to be our item. We have this, this facility in Carolina, and, and if you've ever been in it or toured it, it is a top-of-the-line technological marvel that we have here, and, you know, bringing it to Carolina was a coup in itself. I'm, I'm at the point now, discussing with some people at Germana, especially since the original president brought it, tied it. We need to do whatever we can to make sure we keep this in Germana. So I have, I believe I sent an email out to the school staff in the county before, to say, what can we do to utilize the facility more? It's got high-speed internet built in. The people at Germana have said they, they've offered a few workforce classes there. Part of that is the county's, I won't say problem, but their problem. We, we plan to have the Harris Teeter facility up and running by now, and we would have had a lot of training go through there. Maybe we need to go to MCD and see if we can do something with that. All in all, with COVID, we still need to figure out if you can offer some, some college-level courses there, if you can do anything there. I know Dr. Parker worked with the bricklaying class there, but we, we all, schools, Board of Supervisors, county citizens, have to make use of that facility to make sure we keep it, because that was their original plan, is to come here for a few years, the county would help you with the rent, and they would build up, you know, I guess, a big constituency, and then finally expand into a permanent building. I've got three sites for them to have a permanent building, but I can't move them to any of those sites without, so I'm, I'm asking you, if you have any ways, ideas, or thoughts to help us with that.
So I had noted this conversation that would occur tonight, today at senior staff, and we talked about a few different things that would be helpful. One, a tour of the facility would be great, because it's hard to brainstorm ideas without knowing what the space is outfitted with. So if we could arrange a tour, and we would bring some of our administrators and our senior staff with us, and some school board members, so that we were well-equipped to have that discussion. The other item that we talked about was a needs assessment. So once we see the space, we then could come back to our schools and say, what would be the needs that you would have that would align with the space offering? And then, are there costs associated with this, or an MOU, is there anything in those logistical items that we should be aware of?
It's their space.
Right.
So I would, I think, probably would be a cost and such.
There would be, Charlie.
I, I would assume, well, it's a, it's a cost to them to have a facility there, but I can't answer for them, you don't have to talk.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have discussions with Germana, because the important thing right now is, is activity. If you have a class, because I know you've said before you have dual classes where somebody's in high school and, you know, Germana, well, maybe we can have those classes at Germana, at, at the Caroline facility, you know, instead of at the high school. Whenever we get back to real learning, it's gonna be a little difficult with COVID, but that gives us time to plan. So if, if I go back to Germana and say, we're gonna do something for the, for the facility on behalf of Caroline, they better not say, oh, I'm gonna charge the schools X amount of dollars for the use of the facility, because I'm already paying for it. So I'm taking costs off the table without talking to them for you.
So we're very interested in seeing the space and talking further on that. Once we've got the tour, I think we'll be better equipped to determine its usage. Would you establish that, and let us know a date, or do you need us to contact someone?
I, I sent you before Dr. Davidson's contact, but I will contact him tomorrow and let him know that you will give him a call.
Okay, that sounds great.
And, and we'll arrange the tour, and then we'll go for it. I don't, you know, I don't expect you to have a class there in December. It's gonna be an issue period of when anybody has a class in person. But if we can give them some idea that we're planning for A, B, and C, that, that will help us, you know, in using the facility.
So we, you probably can trace and follow that.
Okay. Thank you for saying that, because that, that confirms what we're saying before. Okay.
And then you added by a joint broadband project.
Yes. Joint broadband projects, and that's, that's, that's three, three different things. One is, we're actually, we, the county are actually working with cable companies, which is nondescript, but of course, very descriptive, to expand their existing cable company. So in other words, there are places that the cable company stops, and the county is trying to investigate, laying more fiber to help them and help us. Other thought, and this is what Mr. Underwood talked about before, is we had talked about bus hotspots, and I think we talked about it, and I talked to Mr. Bowman about that, and I think there were like $10,000 that cost a piece. What, what we have, and, and not all of our districts are condensed, and have a lot of access. This is Long's district, extremely long, and covers almost three quarters of the county's, you know, outside.
They just meant to ask this place.
Yeah, I mean, so, we, we've tried on the county side to have access at all of our facilities. Libraries, county office buildings, all the county.
Fire stations.
Fire, fire stations we're working on. We got DAWN, the DAWN library's up and running now. So we are trying to, to get access out to as many people as possible. And that's one of the ways we could do it, because I, I've had a person say, if you get a school bus, you can park it in my church lot. And people, because they come to the church, because they're going to school, or county buildings, there's nothing in DAWN. There's, there's not a lot in Port Royal, and in the middle of Madison Island, there's nothing. So we're trying to do that, and, and I believe our board would be willing to contribute money to make that happen. And the last one is, I, I sent an email this morning, as soon as it came across my newsfeed, that Congress, okay, Congress and short-term never go together, but the thought is, Congress is actually investigating having the SCC provide E-Rate funding, which is the discount funding for internet to individuals, which would mean county residents could apply for E-Rate funding to run cable to their house. And I think you got, like a dime on a dollar, or something like. And I think you got, it's like a dime on a dollar or something like that. So if it cost us a million dollars to run cable in a certain part of the county, we could do it for a hundred thousand, which means we could do 10 times the money. So those are the three things to discuss. And I would like to know if you would like to help participate in any of those or have different ideas or ways we could help you. We're trying to help each other.
I think, I know that Mr. Bowman is here. He's in the back of the room as our supervisor of technology. I know he's on the broadband committee. Mr. Bowman, if you would like to come forward and maybe offer any insight associated with bus hotspots that you may have. We certainly are interested in expansion of the broadband footprint and will be instrumental in that process as much as possible and feasible for the school division. And I did see your email come in, but I have not yet had a chance to read it. So I need a better understanding. That's how you responded. Thank you. But I think once we know more, we can determine how we can engage along with you.
Now, the reality is, yeah, the reality is they're asking the FCC to do it, having Congress do something. Well, you heard the phrase, "Thank God for Congress." So I'm not sure it's gonna happen, but if we can convince the FCC, we might be able to do it. Mr. Bowman, I'm sorry.
Bus hotspots, it's certainly a possibility. One of the problems that we will have to go in knowing is that bus hotspots are gonna still not have much of an impact in parts of the county that don't have strong LTE service. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be constrained to those churches that are in, that are close to a, a, a cell tower. But it's certainly something that, that, that we would want to do.
And to piggyback off of that, once you start with moving a bus and you increase the intensity, everybody on that tower, it starts to crash because there's only so much bandwidth. So if it's really, if it's LTE-related, we all, we all know where those spots are and everybody who lives around them. I mean, we're fixing, with fall coming, we're gonna actually get some expanded coverage because we're gonna lose a bunch of leaves. So now until mid-April, we're gonna, we're gonna gain some coverage.
Which is most of the school year, but from now on.
Right. Once, once we get, once we get through the leaf drop, we're gonna gain some coverage. And, you know, the folks in Sparta start to call me in May because they say they've changed the antennas again on the tower because they no longer get the signal they got all winter and they forgot that they didn't have it last summer. So it's not a movement of antenna, but it's actually the leaf problem. Mr. Thomas and I were on a call with a last-mile provider. You were on the call also. One of our big dilemmas is they put tree heights in for all these cell towers and they put them in like 40 feet. There aren't very many 40-foot trees in Carolina. They're mostly 90. And so when you increase that height, you also decrease the ability to propagate the signal, which is the other problem we have with bus hotspots. We don't have any flat, wide, open spaces where you can park one with a cell tower not too far away. So that is a real dilemma that we have. Even in, even in the center of the county, Mr. Thomas, where you're at, like you said, if somebody wants a cell tower, you know, will fast-track.
I'm going to send every cell tower to Mountaintop.
Mr. Underwood's got real problems in a couple of places, as does Mr. Black. The one probably with the least number of problems is probably Mr. Forehand, just the way his district is configured.
Basically, his whole district has broadband already because it's all Comcast.
And the very lower part of my district, the upper part of Sparta Road won't come on for another two or three months. They're working their way up, charting out. So I have a ton of people really excited, but they've gotta, they've gotta keep making everything work as they move up Sparta Road. They can send it back to central garage. They can't send it forward yet.
See, the point, I mean, the point of me bringing this up was, one, so you know what we were trying to do. And two, if you would be willing to contribute some way towards that. We were trying and I had talked to one of the cable providers and asked if it would help his decision if we used schools COVID month. And you and I talked about this privately before because I thought it would help their decision. The reality was nothing helped their decision. So we're, we're still discussing with them. But part of it is, and I think these cable providers understand the situation we as a rural county are in. And they, they may be more susceptible to some expansion. And I think that's kind of what we're getting in Sparta. We've got a couple of grants out there. If we get the grants, I'm sure we'll tack on a couple of more dollars to say, well, go this far. And then we're trying to talk to some, well, other cable company about doing something. So would you be willing to help us financially? Would you be willing to give us a cost on the bus hotspot? So we can try a few to see if that would help.
I am not opposed to Mr. Bowman giving you costs associated with the equipment to outfit a school bus. I guess my question is, and again, this is not my area of expertise, but my question would be, is the investment of this school bus technology going to yield a greater outcome of accessibility than what is already there for families who have received upwards of a thousand hotspots? Is there, is there enough of a differential there to make the investment worth it? I don't know the answer to that. We know that we've given out a thousand hotspots and those that have tested them and found them not to be operational have returned them and they've been offered the opportunity to come into the hub. So I don't know if those families would then be able to benefit from a bus. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, see, that's, that's.
You would have to map where those hotspots addresses were returned from.
Yes, we do.
I mean, that's kind of, but it's.
Some of these kids, some of these kids do not have a parent or someone to transport them to a hotspot. You know, and, and we see that, I'm sure Nancy, you've seen that with schools. That's the thing Reggie talked about yesterday. If, if, if I can't get you in my car and take you to a hotspot, you're basically sitting at home with all this wonderful technology and you can't do things with it. So if I could bring you closer in your neighborhood, maybe you can get to wherever the neighborhood center is and download whatever you need to do, then go home and do it. Because we don't, I mean, you're not trying to teach the Zoom, right? You're doing, you know, computer-based training where you can grab data, go home, work on it, send that data back when you're done.
We're live.
We're live. We're school, we're different classrooms.
So it's like, it's sort of Google Classroom, something like that. They're teaching live on.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, the question is on the, the hotspots, are those going away after COVID? The hotspots like that that have been given out, are those going away after COVID? Like when COVID is done, is that, is that what's happening?
Well, it's a one-year contract and so we'll have to reevaluate where we are and what the longevity of virtual instruction looks like because we all know that education has evolved so drastically.
And I get that, but what I'm saying is I think if like something permanent in the ground, something, a permanent structure in the ground would be, as we try to expand to the rural areas, that would kind of save you the less people that you have to do, the more we have permanent, like in other words, in these rural areas, you don't have to do that. So instead of a thousand hotspots, you might only need 700. So that, something permanent would actually benefit everyone rather than having to do hotspots every, it's gonna cost you more money and it would be, it would be like renting or zoning.
And internet, I think we can all agree, is not a luxury. It is, it is becoming a necessity in terms of the way of life and certainly in a public educational realm right now.
And it's not just, it's not just schools. It's all the people trying to work from home. And, you know, I'm a bowman and my DSI would slow them down. That's because there's so many people on.
Well, at bedtime, daytime, the cell towers, you're making a phone call even at 2:00 in the afternoon in the alley. And you're not standing in line inside the cell tower.
Can I, can I say that, can I say that the school board is in agreement that we look at these things a little further and get some cost figures and go from there?
Is there maybe some other providers that nobody else spoke to?
I've got a virtually one network. Yeah, sure. And I've been in discussions with Mr. Bowman before and he was on the last meeting we had with the fixed wireless company that we're trying to talk to. The trip there is I have to tie into wire cable. So there, there are a lot of moving parts here and we don't control any. But I just want you to know we're trying to work together to, you know, make something like that. That's all I have and I'll be back. Thank you.
So in the interest of time, just to fill with the other matters on the agenda, six, seven, eight, nine.
And we can, I was gonna say, we can take a break. We can do a few hours and you all can. Yeah, we've gotta do some other things.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that the school board be allowed to close out their meeting or recess or whatever you plan.
Right.
We all take a break and then we can come back to theirs.
Yeah, because we've gotta reconfigure and we've gotta bring somebody up, bring somebody else in.
Can I get a motion for John? We need a jar.
Thank you.
Six is pulled.
Seven is pulled.
Seven is pulled also.
Yeah.
So six and seven are gone. Agenda number eight, who's presenting?
What have we been doing?
I don't know.
Get them off the clock. Not presenting.
Apparently, Mr. Colley feels like we're gonna need it, so we're gonna leave them out of the way.
I don't know that we need it.
What happened to six?
Six is moved to the 13. So fast he got the label.
Number eight, Mr. Parby, you do an eight, Mr. Colley.
I have it.
Mr. Colley's doing number eight.
After reviewing the four proposals we received in response to the county's request for proposals to remove and relocate the Confederate statue from the courthouse lawn, the committee consisted of the county administrator, the deputy county administrator, Mr. Barton, and the public works director, utilities director, Joe Lucchino. We met and recommended to follow in Rankin's E.T. Russian Construction as the number one Rankin, and number two Wolf House Movers LLC, T.O. Construction, number three, and Seepus Next as number four. And so if the board wants us to continue with that proposal process with that Rankin, then we would negotiate a contract with the number one offer, and if we couldn't get that worked out, we'd move to number two. I know there's been some other discussion, and so if the board has any comments on this process, pick up.
Yeah, I do, um, looking at, um, I mean, this is quite a large sum of money that you're talking about. Can, I had, I've had a couple discussions. Can the county do this? A lot cheaper than these folks here. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Whiteman has the ability, the energy, the, I'm sure he can do it less than a couple of hundred thousand. I know, they should, we could do better than this, I would think.
Are there, are there numbers? They were proposals, and so we got a, we have some estimates, but I wouldn't hardly want to give those out because it wasn't a bid. So if we had a bid, we'd have a hard number, but this was a request for proposals so we could negotiate those numbers somewhat. But I guess they're all, the numbers are very high.
I think it was a lot of money.
We, we have to follow the procurement law anytime we hire someone out. If we decide to, as Mr. Underwood said, do it with county resources, that doesn't require us to follow the procurement law.
No, well, not, no, that's what, no, we, we don't have county resources totally to remove that. So we would still have to follow some procurement, depending on the amount of money to hire various things, we needed a crane or things that we don't have.
But you'd bid them out separately. You could do this as components rather than a complete project.
But you can't ignore, we can't ignore, we can't ignore procurement.
Right, 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 but I'm not saying that.
Right, I'm saying.
But, but you could, you could say, for instance, Public Works, since they do that kind of thing, would project manage it, and they could subcontract out all the things that they couldn't do. And when they subcontract something out, like you said, a crane, they would have to get three bids based on the amount of money it costs.
Right, the first bid was, you know, over $2,000, we started looking for another project. So what is, if we were to go with staff, what does staff need from us tonight to go ahead and do this?
The first thing we had to do is reject the proposal, stop the process for proposals, and then put staff involved. But I didn't know that you were planning on public work. We never know.
Well, my, 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 it was your example.
My, my, I'm just making a clarity statement.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Long.
Is there any reason you can't move forward with a whole of bids? But asking Public Works to do it is one thing. Getting one of our staff members hurt, injured, or worse because they're doing something that they have never done before or don't feel comfortable with is a totally different thing. And I would rather have somebody that has the liability insurance and stuff this before do it than to, than to risk an employee or employees or damage to, to Golden Green property or somebody else's house or whatever. So before we decide, I think you need to talk to your staff and see if it's even something that would feel comfortable doing.
Let me, let me.
I'm not gonna throw this out.
Let me make a suggestion. Let me, let me do this sort of in reverse order. We only have one place to move the monument. And to move the monument, we have to first create a foundation for it. So can we at least agree that we can move forward on the foundation at the, at the only location that's agreed to take the monument? Can you, will somebody make a?
He's still, he's still in the foundation.
We're actually gonna, we're actually gonna contract that out.
Okay.
They are?
Is that, is that not true, we're contracting?
Yeah. Okay.
Let me, let me, let me, let me conquer one, we're contracting that out, correct?
Yeah.
So let's agree that we can.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward, they're contracting out the foundation.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, or do we need to set a price limit on that, Mr. Colley? Mr. Emerson, do we need to set a price limit on that, or is it?
We've got bids, I mean.
Could you repeat the motion, a price limit on?
I'm actually, I'm actually.
Building a foundation.
Building a foundation for the.
At, at.
At Green Lawn Cemetery for the, for the monument, who's willing to accept it.
Well, but, I thought, I thought you were talking about the foundation being built in-house.
No, no, that's the movement. We're, we're doing the foundation first.
The foundation wasn't part of the bid, was it?
It was not.
It was not. It was not.
That's what I'm telling him.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
So this is a separate process, Mr. Emerson. In the, in the bids, I believe the RFP was for removal and relocation.
But not a foundation, because at the time, we knew that we were gonna have multiple sites, and so nobody was having any soul's work, nobody was gonna be able to do any, I mean, they would, they would, you know, worse prices, they guessed that what that would cost.
So, so do we need to set a, do we need to set a force or just a foundation?
Yes. If you have to pay someone outside of the county to build a foundation, and that is also outside of the, uh, contract to move the monument, then I think you should go through, you could do it through the small purchase procedures where you just go up and, you know, call a few contractors and you get three bids for doing it.
Got it.
And then, and then do it. But, um, I think you would have to do that, it's still a subject of the procurement act, so I think you would need to do that.
Okay, so we're gonna go out to, we're gonna give out.
All you have to do is call, you don't have to do an RFP or a bid, all you have to do is, all you have to do is call three or four contractors and say, what would this cost?
What does the motion need to be for that?
That's authorizing to construct the.
Just authorize to construct the foundation at Green Lawn Cemetery?
Authorizing staff to go out, uh, request, uh, um, you know, what it would cost, an estimate for what they would charge, and then going with the, either the lowest one or whatever, I think would be best.
Okay. Nancy.
I'll amend my motion to second.
I'll amend my second. I have a motion, the second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I say a motion carries. So the foundation at Green Lawn Cemetery, Mr. Whiteman. Now we'll go back to number eight, because I think now that we've got a foundation approval, we know what we're gonna do, where it's going.
Well, so.
Now, we have, we have, we have RFP responses that are expensive. My understanding from Mr. Black is building and planning has a, has a methodology for this more than, than public utilities or works.
I would be more excited to study.
Right, so do you want to tell us, do, can we talk about this first, or do we need to get rid of number eight, Mr. Emerson?
I'm sorry, ask me again.
If we're gonna talk about something outside the scope of the, of the request for proposals, do we need to decide that we're not gonna do that before the discussion, or can we have the discussion and then decide?
No, no, you, you can have the discussion.
Okay. Mr. Whiteman, you have the floor.
Okay, so what I've done is, I've got an engineer, we have counted, measured, weighed all the pieces. There's 24. The heaviest piece is 5,700 pounds. I've got everything necessary, but like Mr. Colley said, we'll be paying, I'm not renting a crane, I wouldn't rent a crane, I'd rent a boom char, I have that, I've got the expertise. I've actually got people within our community that are tradesmen, that are volunteer, um, and they're looking forward to this as kind of a community. Y'all voted, the, the consensus was, hey, it's gotta go, and we got a place for it to go, and they want to be part, I, I think, and I saw the bids, and they're crazy dollars. We, we have the resources, we have the capability, um, we've done the whole one. I don't see why we don't move.
All right, that's, that's good to know.
No, 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 right, that's what I said, building and planning is moving, not public. I just wanted to be clear.
He's not building and planning.
He's building.
Yeah, I'm not planning, no.
He's building.
Mr. Colley, would you recommend that we take out any extra insurance for volunteers working on this?
We have, we talked to our insurance carrier, and if that's the direction we go, we will send them a note tomorrow that this is what we're gonna do, and they're gonna put a rider on our policy, and we'll be covered in event of any, any issue, including 100%. So we feel that insurance is there.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
And additionally, Dave Stork and his crew, their expertise, Dave's on board, one caveat I would give you is, once we get it forward, I've got 28 days. The engineer said with the weight we're anticipating, what we think is about 50 tons going back, so I've gotta have a cure rate of 28 days. So once I get it forward, 28 days from that, we can.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, yeah, we can get it done.
Do you worry on the foundation?
Yes.
28 days.
Yeah, it's normal concrete.
Yeah, normal concrete.
Normal concrete, 28 day cure rate.
Plus whatever we got together.
You got you.
Can I ask a simple question? We, in the motion, we decided to build a foundation, but we never actually made a motion to say that's what we're gonna relocate.
But that's gonna be part of that same motion.
It's part of mine.
Yep, that was part of.
That was part of the motion, this Green Lawn Cemetery.
All right, I'm good.
All right.
Who do you want to?
No, I'm not.
It better not be closed meeting.
No, it's not.
Oh.
It's not closed meeting, Mr. Thomas. We're not doing closed meeting tonight.
So.
And building, proceed.
So you, you want this to be another motion?
This is a motion, Mr. Underwood, that Mr. Thomas has been given, that's been written so that we can expedite it.
All right, so this is, now we're on agenda item eight.
Number eight.
After, uh, Mr. Chairman, I so moved that after consideration of the responses to our RFP for removal of the Confederate statue from the, from the courthouse lawn, including the very high estimated cost provided by contractors responding to the RFP, and the far lower estimated cost for building official Kevin Whiteman for removal by using county employees, I moved that the county terminate the RFP process and relocate the monument using county employees and other resources as necessary under the direction of Mr. Whiteman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mr. Black. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any, anything else? Because I'm just gonna go ahead and ask for a recess to 5 o'clock on October 13th.
All right, can, can we put your man on our agenda with everything?
For two days? We can. I don't know that anybody's gonna be ready, but if you want to, I think that's too soon, but.
Well, I've got some things that I need to share with the rest of the board, or maybe I can do those separately. All right, let me do that.
How, however you want, I mean, I just, it's only a week.
No, there's some things we need to do, their, their contract actually expires in a year.
Germans.
On that, German's contract on that building. So we need to, we need to at least give them some more ideas.
We need to get them to come in here and find out why they haven't done anything in four years.
Well, I think that's a good point, too, and that's one of the things I stress with them.
That's one of the hardest, the hardest parts is, is, I mean, I have people over there at Belmont saying the lights aren't on and nobody's ever there, or the lights are never on and nobody's there, I heard that from a number.
Trust me, I represent Belmont, so I'm well aware of that.
I just worked with a few people.
You want that motion back?
Oh, you gave me the cookie motion, too.
I have a touch.
No, Charlie had it. Charlie's a germaphobe.
So can I get a motion to recess to 5 o'clock on October 13th, 2020, the Community Services Center, auditorium?
See you, man.
I have a motion, the second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.